Welcome and welcome to the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
... in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, and in the wisdom of the liberty and justice of our.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the July nineteenth meeting of the CTA town council, regular monthly meeting for the month of July. As always, we start each meeting with a fifteen minute public comment period. The rules are as they always have been. We ask that you stand and state your name and address for the record, and that you comment once within the three minute period, and you keep your comments to three minutes or less, please. Any further comments to begin? Yes ma'am?
Hello. I'm Sue Mackey. I live in Norwood. I work for the hospital. CTA president. Uh-oh. I'd like to introduce Kevin. He's our Labor Relations person. We used to have Kyle, and now it's Kevin Donlin. Kevin Phillips Donlin.
Okay, great. Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the new lead. Big fun.
Are you gonna mention about not coming anymore?
We will, yeah, when we get there. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, thank you. We're gonna proceed right ahead with our agenda. First item up is the CTA museum town board of directors who are here. They've been working on a five-year plan. I want to update us on a little bit on that, and have some discussion about some of their plans. Who's taking over?
I'll start.
I'll jump up at once. Come on.
The big thing, Joe, you've talked about this five-year plan, but actually, the emergency plan right now, because we do not have the storage facility now that the town has successfully sorted and being on the actual floor on that. We have the hearse got to move somewhere, and the little fire truck, indoor fire truck, old fire truck. But the hearse is the management. We have no place to put it at the museum at this point in time. And I think that's gotta be our number one priority, and I think it needs to be addressed in the first year of the five-year. I think that's why we're really here, because what we're gonna do is we're gonna kick you out for some money, which everyone knows, storage, we've gotta build something. And we've looked at several things. Right now, we've got pretty good, we've got the stuff that was left in the old building that was being stored for us at a very convenient rental at the place on Exorah Street. But even that's not practical. We're gonna have to get that stuff moved eventually into some area. We've looked at outbuildings as a possibility of something along the lines of a shed, a quite a big shed.
A pre-constructed one?
Yeah. We've looked at that. We've looked at a permanent building on a slab. And while looking at those, and in discussions with some people, you know, that we've had, the point was made, I think, very wisely, that if we were to put up some kind of a permanent structure, storage structure, and then start to think about building on to the museum, the house, the hearse, that that building's gonna be in our way. We've gotta take it down and move that building. So it doesn't make much, doesn't sound very practical. So the suggestion was made that we should look at building onto the whole museum, extend it out all the way. Originally, we were looking at just where the old drive-in was, because there are already footers there and so on and so forth. But that's not gonna be really big enough for the hearse. We still have to have something bigger than that. So I guess we've kinda come down to the idea that if possible, what we would like to do is build a full width of the old city town buildings, the museum, and the cultural center. And in that, we would incorporate the hearse room and the storage area. I guess that's what we're here tonight for, to present that idea. We discussed it with Sam and Steve, and I won't speak to them, I'll let them speak to themselves. But what, I met with you, Joe, the other day Monday. What we're looking at is if it's feasible, okay, we were lucky enough that a year and a half years ago, a gentleman was here, and he gave us $5,000 to museum board to help with the transfer of the facility. We just spent maybe a few hundred dollars of that to them, to try to do it. The auction money was approximately eighty-two hundred dollars, I think, let's say eight thousand, whatever it was. And then, I don't know what you're gonna have for proceeds from the sale of the building, but the figure I kinda used with Joe the other day was seventy thousand. So if you take those three items, it's about eighty-three thousand dollars. That would be a good step in the right direction, if we could get the town board to approve that idea of using those funds. I don't think that's gonna be enough money, but you don't know either to decide, you know, really what's gonna happen, and who's gonna do it, and so on. We have talked about possibly, if this was to take place, building even a cellar underneath that new extension. But again, that's something we'd have to look at. That would be, I think, a very costly project, for a cellar that would probably cost up, I think, beyond what we probably wanna spend. Because if anybody knows, you build a house, it's one of the most expensive parts in holding that foundation, so it'd be a big exonerating. But anyway, that's what we're here for, to kind of get your reaction, okay? You know, certainly, you're certainly not gonna make a decision tonight, I wouldn't think, but you know, if you did, then you can opt in, go home, have supper. But at least, get your reaction, super toothed, thank you. You can ask us questions. Sam and Steve might have something to add to what I just said, and we'll go from there.
We have applied for several grants. One was the RVRA grant for forty thousand dollars for possibly building the shed. We did not receive that grant. We have asked the village grant writer if there's anything else out there, which there isn't at this time, out there for us to apply for. Even if we have the same money that Joe was talking about, which could be the eighty, say eighty thousand dollars, at least if we went out for a grant, we could go for a matching grant, or if we had to pay X amount of dollars to put towards this, it would at least be, we would have some funds there that would be available for us to use. The storage is going to be an integral part of moving forward with the museum. And the hearse is a very delicate piece of equipment, or a very delicate artifact. It needs to be kept heated, and moving it several times from different locations would not be the best thing to do. And if we got an idea from the village of the town of what they were going to do, we might be able to do some fundraising, but we kinda need to know how we're gonna move forward with the town, and see what they're going to do as far as the commitment. So that's, I'm just adding a little bit more to what Joe had to say. The board's behind this, as far as I'm known. We've had numerous discussions before I came on with the board as a member. I know there were other discussions on the fact that storage would be an issue. It would be nice if we could do a full extension, or maybe ten, you know, ten feet from both ends, so you have a little bit of, so it doesn't look like it was added on to the building. But, I mean, even for the historian and artifacts and everything, it'd be easier to get you than having an outbuilding where people have to walk to. And it would also be heated and climate controlled, because it would be attached to the building itself. So it kinda makes more sense to do it that way. I don't like the fact of building something and then having to tear it down or move it after it's been built. It makes more sense to put, as far as I'm concerned, and as the board members have thought it out, makes more sense to build something that structurally is going to be there, that we can use and keep, and not have to revisit it, take it down, and rebuild it. We're here to ask, as Joe said, for hopefully some funds from that sale of the museum. I think originally, when that was first stated it was going to be sold, there was an article in the paper, and I haven't researched it, but I think the article in the paper did indicate that the proceeds from that would go to the museum to help with what we needed to do. So, I mean, that's something we can research, but hopefully, we can move forward and get this moving forward. The five-year plan, we include the building of that, and then moving on with some other things inside the museum. If you have any questions, the rest of the board's here. Steve and Sam have been included in all of our discussions. We have met with a few people, you know, that are interested in helping us, and at this time, we don't wanna name any names. But if we have a commitment of some kind of dollars, we can move forward and see what the cost of addition would be.
I think if I remember correctly, when we had the auction, and agreed to sell the building, that those funds were both go-towards the museum. That's what my motion was. I would second it, and it was sort of an unimpressive, and I must believe it. So I think we have the money there that will be available for those projects. It's just, I think, us determining what we're gonna go with it, is. I agree that a temporary building, one that is aesthetically pleasing, would be good to put there, something that you had to move it to. And I think it is a good idea to have storage attached, so you're not going out in the ice or whatever in the wintertime, and getting something from another building, maybe more secure as well. So, and I'm in favor of, we have to have some type of storage relief now until the big project. I can't imagine a big project, which would be the largest artifact area and storage, would happen this year. Is there any opinion on that, that whether it could happen this year or not, or?
I think it depends on the funding part of it. I mean, we, we kinda, we can't, we've done some preliminary discussions, but until we actually know what we have for funding, it's hard to nail anyone down to.
You know, we have storage for the hearse, so I'm assuming that, I mean, right now, temporary storage building would be the one to tackle now, and then take our time and plan, and hopefully next year, maybe some, even some fundraising efforts as well, to help out along. Does that sound like it's a feasible plan?
The only thing with, Joe, I don't mean to be, well, that's what, the only thing with a temporary storage building is you're looking at a cost figure. If you want it aesthetically pleasing and tied into the building you have there, you're looking at a cost figure between twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars. My suggestion, and I think the board is going to agree, is if it's possible, take that, take that money, add it to what we might have gotten from the auction and all those other things, and see if we can move forward with the addition, and keep the storage of the hearse. Right now, the storage of the hearse is supposed to be a fire department, which is heated, it's somewhat climate controlled. And then, the artifacts are being stored at another building at a fairly reasonable rate. So I think if you're looking at even a two-year plan, the two-year plan, if you take the resources from the sale of the museum, the auction, and our $5,000 we got, see what we can get for a dollar figure, see if we can maybe fundraise a little bit more, but I think, my personal opinion, I don't wanna speak for the board, is to spend thirty thousand dollars on temporary building to move this, doesn't make fiscal sense.
No, yeah.
No, it doesn't.
We've got the, we've got the storage right now.
So we can live with the storage that we have right now, even if it's a year?
I think as long as, I don't wanna speak for the...
Oh, go ahead.
For her. As long as there's a commitment that we're, you know, that's not gonna be long-term, that we're moving forward, that within two years, eighteen months, you know, it's gonna take a while to get a plan put together, get an architect or someone to draw something. I mean, right now, you're almost obvious, so you're not gonna be breaking ground for this until next spring. So, but I think we can work with that, Joe, as long as we have the commitment that we can continue to move forward and work with the people to do that.
I had a little talk to the, Joe, his name, it has the place on Exorah Street.
Right here.
Yeah, it's right here. I even talked, when I first talked, when I first talked to him about putting the stuff in there, he gave us a pretty good section in the back of the building, and he asked how long, and I said a few months, so I didn't really, you know, if this was gonna turn into a, say, a year or two year, where if I have to store over there, then he might be willing to do it, but I don't know if he would do it at a very generous rental that he's doing.
Thirty dollars a month.
Yeah. That's what we're paying.
And we're already willing to start that?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, we're doing, and he gave us a very good rate, but you know, if it's a two-year thing, where it's gonna have to sit there, you know, then he may want us to, you know, but even if you doubled the storage cost, it would not be outrageous to maybe do that.
You were paying him about a hundred dollars for the storage there, is there a lot to work?
Yeah. Yeah, that's all.
Is that an area where you can access items we need to?
It's, yeah.
Not easily.
Not easily, but.
It's not easy to go in there either.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the back corner, you know, it's like in your storage building, and you have to, you have to know what you got, and so.
Well, what I was envisioning, I thought we had talked a little bit about this, with the excess money that we are getting from all the different areas, is to kinda hold on to it a little bit. We have everything taken care of for the time being, there's no rush on either the fire department or rental, you know. From what I remember, that I was hoping to use some of that money for matching funds and aggressively going on for some sort of funding or grants that requires some matching dollars, rather than spend all our money, all the town's money upfront, and not having anything to match later on. This is something that will take, take a while.
We've also talked about aggressively, aggressively lobbying our legislature. I mean, we look at what Addie Russell has done, and what Joe Griffo's done, and so on and so forth. So, again, that would be in the twenty-eighteen time period, because I'm sure most of the funds that they have available to help, I just noticed today's paper, I think it was Addie Russell just gave the eighteen thousand dollars available for Louisville Fire, so we don't know. And I know I saw something on the Syracuse news, last week, Senator Griffo got the city of Rome a hundred thousand dollars to update all the computers and stuff in their police vehicles, I believe it was larger, I'm sure it must have been police, because they were inside a police car and had a nice computer set in it. So we don't know what possibly they could do for us, and...
Has anyone reached out to Joe yet? I talked to Addie Russell, actually, two hours ago. I'll look Griffo's up. I haven't talked to Griffo's up yet.
I, in my discussions, I kinda, I said, I was kinda, we're kind of the pen opener, but you know, Sam knows Addie Russell. I was hoping supervisor would...
Yeah, I can reach out to Senator Griffo, I haven't had that.
Kind of that acquainted with Senator Griffo, so.
I don't know, it's not the past. Most of them here and there.
And it would be, if we had the dollar figure, I mean, if we went to an architect and said, okay, this is what we're looking at, the town's kind of approved doing this addition along the whole side of the building, what's it gonna cost? We know we have seventy thousand dollars sitting in a bank account waiting for us. Then we can go to Addie or Mr. Griffo and say, okay, we've got this sitting here, we need another seventy thousand dollars to make this come to fruition. Is that possible, can you do?
I agree with you, what you just said. I think you need to do, you need to do some work in specs, in prospective, prospective architects for the project, and once you get that figure, you know, kicking numbers around right now, once you get that figure, that's a big step in the right direction.
I guess I got a question. First of all, this is the first time I heard about it, so are you, you're just going all the way across the back, you're not doing anything with the drive-through?
No.
No, it's actually the drive, it's the drive-through side. It's where the teller, the drive-through was, that's the side.
Oh, you're just going to run like that?
Front to back.
Take the drive-through off.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, we'll move towards the tattoo, or be closer to the tattoo part of it.
Second question I have, and I guess now I'm gonna be the bad guy. I thought there was already money that was spent that was supposed to come out of the sale of the house, I mean, the sale of the old museum.
There has been thus far, I asked Nancy to total it up, the general fund right now is thirty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents for reimbursement.
Which was money that we spent on the new place.
Right.
Does that count into that?
No.
Does that count in the price?
No. So save, and then you've got to, there's be closing costs, or there're gonna be another one, and commission's gonna be another one, five, six, no, more than that, ten thousand dollars probably, when we're done. So you're talking fifty thousand dollars. I think there will be, closing costs plus what's owed the general fund. The general fund's thirty-eight, four, it may be a little on the low side, I don't think it's, I don't think it's high by any means. No, I'm gonna say it's accurate. Those are the figures we actually had, the record, Nancy went through a bunch of, going back to December of two thousand fifteen. So, yeah, there's thirty, as I said, thirty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents to date. So I guess the point is that when we talk net sale proceeds, it's gonna be eighty-five thousand less fifty commission, plus commission, plus clothing.
So shouldn't we move tonight about possibly allocating money for design? I think we need to know what it's gonna cost. And I don't, Paul, I don't know what it would cost for an architect, but I think Albert's right. I think step one is getting what it's going to cost before we can make a decision. So if we allocated X amount of dollars tonight for architect to design this and tell us what the total cost is, I think that's what we need first. I would think. I'm not speaking for anybody else here, just myself.
We need, I look...
Yeah, but weren't we going to get somebody to make a drawing?
Yeah, we can...
And we have somebody that will kinda give us an idea.
We will, why don't, I tried to contact the person that we've been dealing with.
Okay.
Like I said, at this point, I don't wanna put names out.
No, I don't.
And let me see what we can get as far as a drawing, and a ballpark figure for the cost of, both with a basement, which I agree with Joe, is going to be astronomical, I can just put an impression on my house, I don't know who's right, and just with footers, and what the cost of that building would be.
For bill.
And hopefully, maybe by next month, we can present you with a conceptual drawing, not, you know, perfect, but a conceptual drawing at a dollar figure.
How's that sound? That would fit, I think that's step one.
I think you got it.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to know some specifics as far as square footage, how much square footage are we talking? How much will that add to the existing square footage in the building? I can't remember what that number is. You really don't think the hearse would fit in the drive-through?
No.
If we do just strictly the drive-through, you can't actually, you're gonna have to, the way you're gonna have to walk around that hearse is going to be, it's tight. It's tight. And you know, and the thing is, as far as the hearse is concerned, there's also all the funerary stuff that goes with the hearse that needs to be displayed, and then we've got the pumper, the hand pumper, that's gonna be in the same, so I mean, you've got the one hearse, but then you've got all that other stuff that's gotta go there with it. So you've gotta have the room to put it all up.
The hearse on loan to the museum, is that in a heated building?
I don't know unless you have...
I think the answer is no, because none of their buildings are heated as far, as far as I know. So maybe we should be concerned about that hearse that's on loan there, if the cold. I think I've mentioned this before, I've been to the Shelburne Museum in Vermont, which has barn after barn of horse-drawn vehicles. I don't think any of those are heated. They've been there, and I was there probably thirty years ago, that's thirty, thirty-five years ago.
But they also have people who can, are conservators for those pieces of equipment. And our hearse has very delicate plasterwork that's on it that needs to be, I mean, I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm not baiting that, but I'm also saying they have the ability to, if there's a problem, to fix it, which...
Right, I agree.
We don't wanna come to you and say, okay, we need fifty thousand dollars to fix the plasterwork, or whatever, we need to fix some of this.
Do we have numbers of visitors in the last month, the last six months, the last year, the last two years?
Actually, last month, we had about two hundred visitors, which is really significant. I don't know what it is for this month.
How about the month before, like the first month of the winter?
The month before that, I think we were like about a hundred and twenty. I mean, I hope, yeah, somewhere's in that ballpark.
Do you have those numbers though, if you wanna see those?
Yes.
We have those, Albert's in charge of seeing those.
Yep.
What else is in the five-year plan?
Honestly, Joe, we really haven't even...
Oh, so it's under construction, kind of?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. I think it makes sense to have a five-year plan. I wish we had, I wish we had a multi-year budget plan, let alone bigger ways beyond that.
The five-year plan was really suggested by the person who all met with, he thought it would be a good idea if we did that.
I think that'd be great.
A five-year facility-type plan, for short.
Yeah.
So that we can really justify the expense of management someone else will find, so...
I think you'll be happy you did that, Joe, if you do. I know Councilorino Sixpina does that for us for our airport and highway, as well as the infrastructure of the buildings and so on, and it's updated every year.
And I would assume, we do have the $5,000, so I can't speak for the full board, but I'm sure they would go along and spend some of that money. We need to get some, you know, professional to give us a real good drawing or so on and so forth like that. We can probably earmark, that would be a very good use of that $5,000. I don't know, I would hope an architect can do something. I would assume before we do this, we'd have Frankie might know, and the building permits and stuff, we probably have to have an architectural draw, I think that's right, Frankie, so. And so it isn't gonna, it wouldn't be wasted money unless we could build it, but you just gotta have it anyways, so.
If we could get one for free first.
Oh, absolutely.
Always like, always like free.
Go free.
I think in the end too, we need to ask about what will be, house maintenance, figure of increase, what additional utilities, all that kind of stuff too. We need to know that.
Yeah, I'd like to see exactly the timeline that you plan on taking each step, and what's going to happen, and when it's going to be done, I mean, if docking year plans, you know. We can hopefully develop some more revenue for that.
Joe, a couple of questions. You refer, you keep referring to the hand pumper. Is that not to go to the storage, the store?
Yes.
Yes, that's...
It is supposed to go to the storage.
Yes, yes.
Do you want me to approach Mr. Hayden and ask him, say, for some reason, we're there for more than a year, and decide going to change what we pay?
Yeah, I would, I would hope so. Yeah, absolutely, sure.
And then I just want everybody else to know that we are, as time permits, moving, it's still on the stock, the old one, but it's between what I've got on my schedule and what I got with vacations, and what personnel are out on sick leave. If this comes down to somebody's got a building and then they have to be out, somebody's gonna have to decide, we might have to pay overtime or figure out how to do it.
Sure.
We're picking away at it as we go.
How's the hearse getting out of there?
Well, that's the other, I do not, I do not, I'm gonna tell you right now, we do not have the expertise to move that. Well, that's, that's the other, I, I do not, I do not, I'm gonna tell you right now, we do not have the expertise to move that hearse. And I, I will not want, I, I don't want the responsibility for moving it, so.
I, I discussed it at the fire, at the firemen, and guys down there said they'd like to, uh, help us do it. Um, David Farley is, I, is probably as knowledgeable as anybody on, even when the Magic, uh, people came, uh, David supervised that, this man, and he said definitely he'd be here to help us with this plan. So, it's just a matter of when we do it. But I have, a lot of guys ship their hat, and we got a couple guys that do it, and things like that, so hopefully we're gonna move it. We'll be frank, so, yeah, I, I, we can't, I mean, I think Tom and I talked about it, but Tommy was in the A's half a year or so ago. Talked about, and the guys did say that they would help us do it, so. And we got those guys.
We got those guys down there that.
One other thing, there is a lot of stuff that we are moving that are basically saying no longer needed, wanted. Um, in order for that to go away, you people are gonna have to, assuming coming to the board and, uh, obsolete equipment, you're gonna have to get approval to get rid of that. File and damage tables, I can't just throw that stuff in my car. Because it's, it's impossible. So you're gonna have to come, I'm assuming, right, am I saying it right? You're gonna have to come to the board and have permission to either put it out for bid, or give it to somebody else, or somebody that may need, you know, voice, voice, I don't know. But, I mean, the, the files are a good file, like, you know, roll and throw them in the trash. I can't do that unless somebody tells me it's okay to do that. So there's lots of stuff that have no keep on it, no keep, whatever, but.
Oh, you label that way or?
Label that, and you gotta move that.
Yes, I, I label those not to be moved, because they're things that, that we don't need, you know, in the future. So I thought, you know, that it would just go, like, you take things and store them and sell them or whatever, but.
Well, I don't have any place to store. So I'm moving them along with the rest of the stuff until somebody tells me.
Can you keep them segregated over there?
Well, what's, what's the process? If we just tell you what we don't want?
I think.
Yes. Well, we did, what did we do before? Like, we, we had a list of things we deaccessed, correct? In the collection. Um, and from the inventory, we'd be the same way, I would think.
This is, this is office.
Are there inventory numbers on it? There must be, or not?
No.
No.
No, all right. I think there's a list of what you, what you want, I think that's where we start.
Yes, you are. One area.
Any better clients and help, because I, I just, I don't.
If the Eric's office told you.
Roads are, roads are moving, moving museum, I'm not trying to be, I'm not being smart, but.
Well, do we hire somebody to move the stuff?
Well, my suggestion, if you hire someone to move the stuff, you don't move the stuff that's labeled, do not move, because we don't want, we don't need it stored anywhere.
I don't have it stored.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
So if it's left in the building, then the, the owner decides to do it?
They might not want it.
Well, that's right, but is there, I bought a house once, once you're having a bad year.
You have no intention to use the desk area that you had before, right? Maybe they can use that, that setup for their, if they want to file and cast us, let me know, we'll leave all the stuff there. But you still have to get approval for writing off.
And I don't know, just stuff from the leftover from the, the storage facility, just.
Yeah, except that was in the contract, but.
We, we, we put that out for, for people to come and look at that. There was a, there was a record of what happened there. Somebody tells me what they wanna do with it, if it's going to the scrapyard, just having an intention.
Why don't we get a list and distribute that throughout the other county and see if they need anything? If they do, they can take it, they recede something, if the library is something, they can take it, and then we'll go from there.
But doesn't it make, doesn't it make more sense not to move it?
Well, if somebody in the town, it's not as good as the purchase offer, so if somebody in the town or in the government village, whatever needs something like that, I think that mission first shot on it, and then the new buyer might, might want it. I also have a trailer too, Joe, we need, I have a car hauler that moved that hearse, we need that coverage on it.
Um, before we move, if, if there's anything else specific, before we move on, we are using some of the sale money to repay the general fund, that's, that's what we talked about when you were in the motion. It will be whatever was net left, will be go to the Museum of Zara. So, so we'll repay the general fund for this, I, I, I just got this, I can forward this to you, so you can see what, what the costs were. I mean, there's any variety of things from the cost of the storage to carpet, uh, depot, all kinds of stuff. I can send it over to look at now if you want, I don't care. So, okay, anything else on this? Okay. Uh, next up, thank you very much for your time, folks, we appreciate it. Thank you for your volunteers on the board too, to the board members.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Everybody has to crutch for time, I know that, so we appreciate that. Oh, we did it after executive session, I didn't report that to the department, did I?
What? Yeah.
All right. Yep, I guess I have the notes on that. I will, uh, take care of that tomorrow. I thought so too, um, I thought I had those in the notes on, but.
Did it get torn in there like bam, or just torn away or not?
She didn't know about, so, no.
Does he notify?
I, yeah.
Somebody in the audience would like to know who it is.
I don't remember, I did, Mr. Whitman for sure, same?
Bob.
Robert Whitman, okay.
Bob Wickham.
I can remember his sure sign. Okay, we got a couple other reminders to be on, uh. So do we need to act on this trade contract that is expiring seven thirty?
No.
Okay.
They'll all have a, a new contract, we can basically export it.
Sure, all right, okay.
And then reminders, the water rice contracts coming due to different places, and the state's own agreement is, uh, in September. Transfers and amendments. Have those in your packet, and if you have any motions, take care of those, please.
Double second.
Motion is second, discussion. All the favor, sitting by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, session, motion carries. Uh, warrant, you pay the bills.
You signed them, Steve?
Yes, I did. Second.
There you go.
And I thank you for that.
Discussion, all the favors, sitting by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye. I, I'm in favor, I'm opposed. Okay, um, one other item that I failed to put on the agenda, just, it really is not for a discussion in, in the meeting. We can have, we can do it afterward, is that, um, there's proposal, it doesn't need to be during session, in other words, people wanna see it, that's fine. We have proposals to make improvements at the, uh, intake, uh, we've been discussing it for a while. I need some direction from the board on a couple things, we've got the big drawings, we've got the small drawings. Um, and so we'll, uh, we don't need to take any formal action, I just need to come back with them. It's a matter of, there's two phases, but, that's the two phases for the plan, so are you okay with these two phases? What are our priorities, et cetera, et cetera? It's, the, the amounts are significant, they'll become out of the power authority, uh, recreation funding that we, uh, that we negotiated as far as the ten-year review. They've already spent a little over a million dollars at the new facility in Waddington, which I was at Monday for the river cutting, absolutely gorgeous, uh, in Island View Park in downtown Waddington, there is a new gazebo there, uh, as long, as well as a new bathhouse. Uh, just a beautiful, beautiful building and beautiful location right there in the banks of the St. Lawrence. And I expect you will, people will be shocked by what we end up seeing at the intake when we're done in a year, year and a half from now.
Absolutely right.
Fifty-five years too late.
No, but it's never too late. We'd like more, we'd like it sooner, but we're gonna, we're gonna get what's coming to us.
Well, like, yeah, I think that we should acknowledge that all that the power authority has done, with whatever time frame.
Sure.
Has anybody been out to that nature center, you know?
Yeah, it's beautiful, yeah, nature center's gorgeous.
And like getting a thousand people a week.
Yeah.
Then this project that they're going to be doing is.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, and, uh, and another ten-year review, twenty-three, so, what else is to come down the road?
Well, it just helps make the area more of a.
Sure. Makes it more of a destination all the time. Um, I also have one thing, uh, I guess I'll, I'll do this under committee reports maybe, or do you wanna do, are we doing committee reports or what?
We get them to the executive session.
Yes, the executive session.
I'd love to, I'd love to sit.
All right, Frank, there's a couple things that I thought you had.
There's, you know, that the, uh, the audit operators feeding up to the mall across from the one thirty-one bridge are closed.
I noticed that.
We have a collapsed, the cover pipe that collapsed, or can catch bases. So that project is going to be done next week.
Those, those belong to us?
Yeah, it'll be something that was taken off the ice in the mall. Um, and, uh, the other thing is.
Oh, you think, oh, thank you.
It could be, uh, we're gonna have to go through the media to cut it, and it's a pretty good project. And hopefully we can find a good piece of pipe going down to, to the catch basin, uh, three seven.
There was a reason why we should get more sales tax money to return, and so on.
Right. I always found that every day.
Many.
Obviously, we continue to get in the Horton Road ready for, uh, resurfacing. And, uh, the airport, the FAA inspection, we have, uh, answered all nine findings and have submitted the, uh, report to the FAA. The electrical home none project has started, uh, this Monday at the airport. Just sort of like those, uh, runways nine, runway, one rate, runways, runway nine two seven will be shut down during this project. Okay, so we got five two three. That doesn't affect our operation, because obviously we've got one, obviously we've got one, so it's just. Boutique air is inflamments for July before forty-eight. Uh, first quarter so far this year, we've had fourteen hundred and thirty-seven inflamments. Compared to last year, we had twelve tens, so we're plus two twenty-seven for the year. Just so everybody still knows, you know, a lot of good stuff about boutique, but when they have a flight that's canceled or delayed, people are very unhappy with their, their customer contact number or replies to them. And they're very vocal when they call the airport. Yeah, about full month, a lot of the comments is, well, it's your airport.
We should have talked to Sean.
I think you really should convey that concern and, uh.
We should, we should tell Sean.
I mean, obviously good reviews, but when they have a hiccup, people aren't happy because nobody's answering the phone. That was the biggest complaint with K-Bear, they're nobody responding to their concerns. You know, when's the plane gonna take off?
We would be vocalized that with Sean.
We have, we have.
We should contact them again.
Uh, the library, I was, uh, obviously continuing to work with Pat Hosinski, they do have the resources to help us with the wheelchair, uh, installation. And also Elaine received, did not receive any bids on the new business research center. So potentially, we will, hopefully we'll put these two projects together and have bid, and we will get a, a larger contract because of the additional work. And then Paul Baxter, the new risk manager for St. Lawrence County, visited our little town yesterday. He went through the town hall, town garage, and the airport, and now we have thirty-three findings that we need to get.
None of them were serious.
None, serious, minors and obligations, but time-consuming things to take care of.
You are a compliance officer.
Hmm?
Are you, no? You're a compliance officer.
We'll watch.
Did you answer that? I don't know.
He's a superintendent of buildings and grounds, so that's why he.
Oh, okay.
That was a question.
Um, so, we'll start working on those.
Hey, anything else? Right, I know we had one session, one, one item for executive session.
I do, I, Car Show is still going well, thanks to Nancy, and I wanna thank them for all their help. Uh, they, they helped out a lot, um, they're even gonna help the day out, so they say. Uh, but it's going well, it's still scheduled for the last weekend in August. Um, we've submitted, the budget's not gonna be astronomical, I know that you gave me a number months ago, and I'm not even gonna get to half of that, so.
Okay, I remember the number, good.
And so hopefully it'll be a great turnout, we've been advertising it a lot, we've had people personally hitting out, save the date cards at shows, uh, we're gonna start commercials on the radio and social, pounding social media, so hopefully this will be a great turnout. Hopefully we can get Boutique Air there to show off their plane. Uh, I know they're busy, everybody's busy, so we're working on that too. So spread the word on the Car Show, there is going to be, oh, I do wanna say publicly, I wanna thank Pat from CNS. He had sent over backwards for us. His, his company has donated signs, his company has done a ton of copies for us. He submitted the plans to FAA, he's done a lot for this airport, for this Car Show, so I do wanna publicly thank Pat, because without Pat and a few other people, this would've been a lot more work.
Was there Pat on shoot?
Yeah.
Don't ask us to spell it.
I'll send it to you.
I call Pat.
H L U D S E N K I.
But that's all I just wanted to say, the show's gonna go on, and hopefully it'll turn out good for our airport.
Okay, good, good news. All right, uh, rescue squad, any, uh?
Executive session.
Uh, we, we took care of their, their man door show there, we basically had an unsecured door. Um, the man door being yanked open, and, uh, ended up finding the frame, whoever installed the door, the original, um, addition to the building, there was, wasn't attached to anything, it's over time.
Okay.
Pretty much just loosened up. So it's been repaired, and we're probably going to proceed with installing a mag lock, because there's a, they, they keep, it was a recurring theme that during the winter, the door heaves, and a lot sometimes, doesn't catch all the time. So if you put a mag lock on like we have here, it'll stay locked.
Okay. Hospital, I mean, we just had a brief discussion, I don't realize anything more than, I don't know. Uh, okay, MED, anything there?
They be.
Library, we just heard about the, uh, no bids, anything else?
Their last meeting, uh, they couldn't get a board, so.
Okay.
Their landscaping project is still ongoing, it's nice.
Good.
Uh, she has, she, she contacted the village, and I think the village is gonna be in her quote on, uh, installing a new curb.
Curb, okay, good, good.
They didn't leave last week.
Oh. And so, can you give us a report? From what I've heard, I talked with Patty, and she said they were just meaning to pay bills, so. But she fooled.
Kind of one.
All right, museum, we had a bunch of discussion on that, anything else?
Okay.
Recreation.
I'm gonna skip most of this stuff, but, uh, this is a major roof. We're having water leakage all the time coming in. And it's starting to affect the structure of the arena. Patching it isn't working. Uh, it creates this, when it, when we got rain, if we've got, uh, summer. We've got things going like the lacrosse games going on, the players are slipping on the wet, wet parts and so on. The roof is well beyond its life expectancy, well beyond. It's a thing that we have to address, and we have to address it soon. We don't, Mike's opinion, we don't wanna go into the wind, or that roof, we're not gonna be able to through the wind, or that roof.
Does the structure of our roof?
Seeping into, uh, it from the floor, it's seeping into areas.
Are you saying the, the structure of the roof, okay, it's just the boundary?
Oh, the structure of the roof's okay, that was a question I sent. Mike McCabe, I talked to Mike again this morning, I talked to the mayor this morning, and I talked to Mike. Mike has, uh, contacted the roofer and governor, obviously this is not a law for bid. Yeah, but, uh, he's, he's gonna prepare figures that we're gonna need. And the mayor feels that, he and I talked this morning, and there is money available to grant through Parks and Recreation, which the arena would certainly qualify as. There is a deadline to submit for that, uh, grant of July twenty-eighth, and the village will. And the village will take care of that. Because it's a fifty-fifty project, it's a capital project. It's fifty-fifty and they're not involved.
Okay.
I'm, I mean, I think me last month.
Me and this folks can.
Can you give a report?
Just up at Ginyar, I'm working with, uh, a person who's realizing some space in the industrial park. Small game factory. I've had a conversation with this afternoon. Perfectly opposed to the idea and says, um, with, uh, which goes with Mike to see where the, the firm that they contracted with for the gold research. And how they're, are they, how that's all, uh, inter, inter, combined with the efforts locally and.
Okay, uh, Chamber of Commerce, they meet tomorrow as well, but they, um, just around, had the summer festival. I have the power authority last week and the week before, uh, went well. Uh, they are, they have an event tonight that I'm obviously not able to be there. Uh, uh, that is sort of a networking business card exchange. Uh, I think it's called Cocktails of Cards or something like that, but I coach this one or anything. Uh, so, but they're working to develop new events, do some different things differently than they've done in the past and, and, um, there's a lot of energy there and they're doing what they can to, to, to make a difference. Uh, supervisor councilman reports. I have, uh, two items that I have. I'll do the first one, I don't have anything to say, trying to afterward. Uh, and this is a note that I received. Uh, we would like to thank you for sponsoring our July first community event. Uh, because of your sponsorship, because of your sponsorship, our community event was a success. Uh, thank you. Um, and then it's from the, uh, Erica Leonard, who's the manager of the St. Lawrence Center Mall. She's speaking specifically about the fireworks, the sponsorship we did there. They had an entire event around the fireworks that day. Uh, very successful as I understand. Uh, they just wanted to say thank you and I wanna make sure that you and the public heard their thank you. Uh, anything else for the councilman? Okay, last thing I have is, um, Nancy Figaro's gonna leave us in, uh, nine days. Well, actually, I think it's seven workdays. Um, and, uh, she's been here in a lot of meetings, as you know, almost every one of them in the twenty-some years she's been here, twenty-six, I believe it is. Uh, and we didn't want that to go unnoticed, so we have a little presentation for Nancy. Yes, it's astronomical. It includes the hospital.
MED.
An MED. The, the county attorney who called to tell me about the increase said it's now nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars as compared to the two hundred and some we pay right now. Uh, he, his words were seventy-five percent of that is the hospital. He believes the hospital's had a spike in workers' comp plan. The hospital does not believe that is the case because they have a self-pay workers' comp program. They're supposed to get any numbers. Uh, I think this whole approach is ridiculous. It's ridiculous that we weren't involved. There's a meeting tonight in Canton on shared services. Workers' comp will be discussed there. Why it wasn't discussed, why we weren't, everyone who was a member wasn't called in for discussion before this, I don't understand. But the city had a committee, apparently that committee was discussing it. I have asked Nancy to reach out, and Brendan will take over, to reach out to other companies that do municipal, uh, workers' comp. Uh, we, there's one that always makes presentations at the, at the Association of Towns meeting, it's called NYMER. Um, we're talking, it's an acronym for something, which I don't know what it is, but, so we're trying to get a hold of them, take some kind of quote. I think we need to go a step further, 'cause I, I'd love to be able to take, tell the county, forget it, we, we want out. We still have not been able to get, nor has the hospital been able to get, a figure from the county for what it would cost us to get out of the plan. Because there will be a tail, they call it, there will be subsidiary that we're gonna owe going forward, owed to get out of the plan. Uh, the hospital obviously needs to know that because that's gonna be a huge number for them, probably a significant number. Um, it'll probably be significant for us, but it may be a hell of a lot cheaper than a hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna have with the increase in premium. So, um, the other thought that I had is, why don't we look, reach out to the other municipalities who are having large increases? The city of Augustsburg, the village of Canton, the village of Potsdam, uh, to see, and MED is gonna be part of it, to see if we can put together our own consortium and go to, then go to a commercial carrier who does municipal workers' comp and say, we've got X number of entities, here's the number of employees we have, here's our risk, uh, give us a quote. Uh, so, uh, I think we need to do something and, and, and I think our best bet, no. I wanna see if our best bet is to simply get out of the county's plan. I think if large members like the town of Messina get out of the plan, the county's plan will either collapse or they'll have to make other plans. And I'm not trying to do that to the county. I'm trying to do what's best for the town of Messina.
Well, it would be nice if we knew where and how they came up with these, you know, before we go jump in.
They just cut out, yeah, they basically cut out the, uh, property values.
Yes.
So, I mean, that was on a sliding scale and you may went from, was it ninety, eighty to seventy, it was sixty. Now it's completely wiped out, so it's actually true, um, salaries, instances of, uh, injuries and risk, you know? So, I mean, it's, it's based on that. I mean, I've got some different numbers far than me. It was like two forty-one for town of Messina and MED.
Um, 'cause we paid eight thousand dollars this year. Eight thousand.
Eight zero, eight zero zero, zero.
That's all we paid. And MED paid something like maybe eleven thousand, 'cause we're very comparable. And then the hospital paid the rest and I think it wa, our bill was, it was around a hundred fifty thousand. That was for everybody. So the hospital would go, and I, so I think their share was maybe a hundred and thirty-nine thousand or something like that, or. I wanna say the hospital was a hundred and thirty-something from that to the new fee of nine hundred and fifty thousand. And how we figured our share, 'cause we didn't have that information. We didn't have the, the risk and who was involved.
Experience.
What, what the experience ratio was. So we would just, we just took everybody's salaries and figured out what part of they, part, part they were of the whole. Hospital had the biggest salary and their portion was something like ninety percent of the total. So if you took, if you use that same for, formula and did ninety percent of that, uh, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the hospital is going to be, I mean, that is just a ridiculous amount of money for them to try to come up with.
Well, with the private insurance, it's double that. One point two, one point four million dollars, whatever.
Have they, have they looked into that?
We, we've been mentioning that for three years, that when, if, when and if the hospital privatizes, their comp insurance will double. So.
Well, from what they were paying at a, at one, one fifty?
Wasn't bad. One, another hundred fifty thousand isn't bad. Another several hundred thousand, a lot of money.
But they were saying it would double from the one fifty?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's three hundred.
Three hundred, but doubling seven hundred thousand is.
Yeah.
One point four million.
So, I mean, to be continued, obviously. Right, what's the tail on it? Right, we know what the tail is on it, so. For that, more for us. So, I mean, to be continued, but I, I think we need to get our ducks in a row and find out what exactly, what are, what are other alternatives are out there? Um, and, um, I will try to correspond with the other municipalities.
Yeah, I talked to, go ahead. I talked to Tony Accret on the way in. He was on his way to that meeting.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Of course, I was at five o'clock, so.
Right.
He was at five thirty.
Right, yeah, I, I was at the last one. I haven't seen a good deal tonight, so.
So, but, I mean, he was, he was saying that, you know, explaining how it all came about. But he and his people are more than willing to come whenever we wanna schedule a meeting to talk to us about it and try to explain how they came to where they are. I don't know if the board would be interested in that.
Did, does Mr. Button have the answer of, St. Lawrence County has a jail that has probably eighty-plus officers and support staff, which I know for experience is a high-risk work environment. They have a large DBW. How did theirs lower seven hundred? Does we, do we have the answer to that?
I don't know.
Did he share that information?
No, I didn't get it the week.
Can we get an answer how theirs lowered approximately seven hundred thousand? I don't know how that worked. I asked, I, nobody knows the formula here, how it works, Sam?
No.
No, they're unwilling.
We can ask, we can ask them to come to the next meeting and see if they can answer.
Yeah, and I talked to Steve, he says willing to come to that.
I would love to, to speak.
You know.